Session to order. First item up is art wall.
Well, you're looking this way, so I'll let you. I've provided the report to council, and I know Mr. Brown wanted it as a topic for this evening. As you well know, that Avery jury came, juror, came to the city with an idea to do an art wall. After some discussions and some presentations by Avery, we said, sure, let's give it a try. And it's been nothing short of controversial, or at least there's been a lot of controversy over it. And the city council kind of refined, you know, what the canvas would be and some rules. And we had posted rules up there as well as Mr. Juror, which more than once they were spray painted over. But we, I think the council took the position, let's see how this pans out over the next few months. While the Michigan Department of Transportation had contacted your Public Works Director, Brian Armstrong, and said, hey, you can't do that, that's our wall. And I know in years past, there has been some maintenance issues with that wall, basically the tunnel wall. And MDOT has basically said, no, that's not our wall, it was the railroad that went underneath our road, although the bridge is held up by the walls. So now they have, you know, and I kind of pushed back a little bit, and I said, well, if you put it in writing, send us an email that MDOT has jurisdiction over that wall and that all future maintenance is going to be on your dime, then, you know, we'll accept your jurisdiction of that if you make it definitive, which they did. And they even said, you know, we might go down there and do some, you know, in the future if this goes MDOT's way. We might go down there and paint over some graffiti because we've got the crews, we've got the paint, we're right here, but we can put that into our annual maintenance contract with MDOT, and that will reimburse us for that. So it might be our guys doing the work, but they will reimburse us for time and material on that. So that's where we're at right now. MDOT was hoping that we would get it painted as soon as possible. I told Brian that, you know, they have to have a little bit of patience because we need to bring it to council and just let you know what MDOT's disposition is on the wall. And then, of course, winter's creeping in, actually it's here, full force today with the weather. So the temperature's not been conducive to doing any major painting. Two weekends ago, we did have some derogatory paintings done on the outside of the wall, which we've, you know, notified people that you don't paint on the outside. So they painted on the outside, and it was also offensive and vulgar. So we got those painted over real quick. So that's where we're at. We would probably be looking at complying with MDOT's request and having it painted over in its entirety sometime in the spring when the weather's much warmer. And MDOT did say, apparently this is something that's now kind of a thing throughout the state. MDOT's kind of not really paid a lot of attention to it, but now they are, and they will allow communities to sponsor appropriate type murals, but they would have to not be offensive, not, you know, they throw a bunch of criteria at us. So it sounds like MDOT would be kind of a judging party as to what actually would ultimately get painted. But by permit, they would allow that. So that's where we're at. MDOT says paint over.
The only reason I wanted it brought up was to, I just wanted to make sure that we had clarified with them and that they were on board with they were going to be, other than the initial painting, we're probably responsible for the initial covering it up anyhow because we're the ones that let it happen. So, yeah, I don't have any problem with that, but any, any future paint overs or if they want signage or, you know, anything like that, I just wanted to make sure that they were on board with us, that they were going to pay for it.
And I will save that email and let you frame it and put it on the wall. And the interesting thing, too, is we replaced the sidewalks down here in front of Admiral because there was concern about how it was slanted. And Brian had approached the MDOT TSC representative, and they said, we don't care if you replace that, that's your sidewalk. So since there was money to be spent, it's ours. I don't know if this is like your teenage kid or not, but...
I got different people at the local MDOT now that...
They have gone through a number of managers and staffs, probably staff, over probably about the last 10 years. But I don't think this is, Matt is a gentleman Brian's been dealing with, and that's usually our normal contact, and he's been there for, for a while.
I could see him, you know, maybe wanting to pick stuff up even statewide because, you know, a lot of people complain about the graffiti.
Yep.
And that's what most of the tunnels and bridges all get, you know, have done to it. And I guess I can understand it, but I don't know, I don't know that if they know what they're getting into trying to prevent it. We know, but...
So the way, so the way it sits now is they are going to take it, control it? Or they're going to issue permits?
Well, they're stating that the, the wall, the tunnel, is their jurisdiction. And basically, we did not seek their prior approval, although they never had a system until that got painted. So now MDOT does has, does have a process where communities and organizations can seek a permit to paint in cer, on certain bridges and tunnels.
Because I just, you know, there's people now that have the habit that they can go down there whenever they want and start painting, and I don't know how it's going to get stopped, no.
We're going to have to retrain.
So is it just the tunnel that belongs to them, or is it the whole wall behind? That's my, one of the questions I have. Where does their jurisdiction end, I guess?
Well, I think in discussions in the past, the wall that is on the old Pinheads property that runs alongside West Colby, there's a seam, and basically, they're saying from that point to the west is not theirs. But pretty much, you know, the walls that come out in the embankment going towards the chamber...
So the walls that essentially hold up our monument is, belongs to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious. I didn't follow it except that small section by West Colby.
I, I find it a little humorous being that I've been on council before, and we, I remember we were putting up four by eight sheets of plywood under the bridge because it was falling on people, and they washed their hands of that. So it is, it just, interesting that now it's a, now it's a thing, so, yeah, keep that, keep that, definitely keep that email, so. That's for sure. Is there anyone who has anything further they want to add to this discussion?
Well, I think the only thing I want to add, because I'm not going to lead into the lengthy controversy because I wasn't part of it and, and I'm glad. But I, I do think, you know, it would, it would be great if we could help come up with some ideas for young people in our small community, because I think the graffiti thing is not necessarily just ours or the, the murals and things. I think that's kind of a, you know, a larger trend that's happening, and, you know, it's probably going to continue when, you know, I mean, both Steve and Jeff know that we dealt with having to paint over, you know, things, you know, it's, it's not a, you know, it's something that's always happened, so I don't think we created a habit. But I do think it's a larger trend, but I also think it would be great if we could find things that young people could do in the community that we could kind of direct them to productive use of, of their teen years. And so, you know, that's just, that's just my point of view.
All right. With that, we will move on to the next subject of handicap parking at Picadels. Scott, would you want to give us a story on this one?
Sure.
History?
History. That'll, that, that sounds a little better. Um, as I noted in my report, Mr. Frank Hollister has been quite an activist for ADA compliance and accessibility in the White Lake area. And I know that he's brought some items to our attention and as well as to others' attentions regarding Picadels. And the latest is that the University of Michigan Civil Rights Litigation Initiative, which appears to be made up of law students under the direction of a law professor, sent our Public Works Director a letter first asking for on-street handicap parking on mirrors. And of course, Brian asked me what to do with it, I says, well, we're not doing that. I mean, that's just a bad idea to have ADA parking where a handicap person who might quite often is the driver is getting out into a traffic lane. And then they sent Brian another letter, and I told Brian, I said, well, all right, let's, let's talk about some ideas. Then they sent, I believe, a third letter, which included a letter to all of the council members. The, the letter is kind of interesting because they did cite an MCL section, which is Michigan Compiled Laws. So of course, I looked it up, not being an expert lawyer or anything, but it basically describes the size of the sign. And I think from reading that letter more than once, what they're asking us is to just put up a sign and call it good, because there is a strip of asphalt that's off the street and on the terrace on the north side of Picadels where they plan to do some improvements for an ADA entrance. When I looked at that and Brian and I talked, and we also have a copy of the ADA requirements, that, that's inadequate, it's not wide enough. So if council is willing to work with Picadels and Mr. Hollister and the mobily disadvantaged, and that's probably not a politically correct term, so I apologize for that, community, we could perhaps add this to our Warner Street project, which is scheduled for next summer, because it, you know, for that small of a project, you're going to pay kind of a higher per-unit cost. But if we've got a construction company in that can just sit over there for a day, it's going to be probably the cheapest we can get. But if we want to go ahead and put in an appropriate-sized concrete pad with the signage to the rest of that asphalt up so that we don't end up with regular motorists parking, you know, creeping over into the handicap spot, then we could probably do that. Proper signage, proper size, but I guess my thought also would be is that this would be done and reimbursed by Picadels. It'd probably be a couple of thousand dollars. But again, if they were to do it on their own, hiring a local contractor, it'd probably be a higher unit cost.
So you're looking at from the sidewalk towards the funeral home, essentially, right in front of, okay, there's like three spots there right now.
Yeah.
Are we looking at parallel, we're looking at?
It would have to be parallel.
Putting a minute in.
There's 20 feet from the edge of the street.
To the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk.
And that really wouldn't be enough.
An angle even.
Yeah.
But I think we could do a parallel one, but I think, again, we'd get rid of that, all the rest of that asphalt.
Yeah.
And just, just so that it's, everybody knows this is a handicap spot, don't try and, you know, overlap it or think that if there's not a handicap car there, they can park in half of it.
So there probably would be, what, three spots we'd make there?
I think we would just do one.
Just do one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what the Civil Rights Litigation Initiative is asking for, is a single spot. I'm not even sure, I'd have to look at building code to see what the minimum number of spots are. But one is way better than none.
I mean, essentially, where he parks his truck there, I mean, we could run that down farther to the alley, but I don't see any reason to really do that, but...
Now, this would actually be able to go to the west of his truck.
Okay.
Because they actually have an asphalt pad almost to the sidewalk on mirrors going back. And then there's a gravel area, which I think is where he parks his catering truck.
Is MDOT involved only on the mirrors street?
Yeah, there would be no MDOT jurisdiction, no, not on mirrors. MDOT's not involved in this at all. It's just at one point, Mr. Hollister had asked MDOT to put a handicap parking spot in front of Fettish, basically. And MDOT said, yeah, we do not support that, that's, that's kind of a hazard to have on-street handicap parking.
I missed a second there, because I thought they were, they had been involved in...
No, no.
That parking spot.
We just kind of, you know, we're just kind of borrowing their, their, you know, their logic, and, I mean, it certainly makes sense. I don't know if there's any on-street handicap parking anywhere that I'm aware of. That's why it's always off street.
That's essentially why you see the lane, and then you see the blue, blue stripes next to it, so they have that distance to be able to get out safely.
Yeah.
I've got a question. Is, and then is that good access to the door that they're planning?
It would be adjacent to it, yes.
Adjacent, okay.
And that would probably be added to a hard surface, whether it's a, somebody on the passenger side, driver's side, or the passenger side to get out and go around the vehicle and out of the building.
And, and Picadels owners are, are okay with this?
We have not touched base with them yet.
Well, it seems like a win-win for them and for us. I, I'm aware of Mr. Hollister's efforts. On the other hand, I'm, you know, as someone who is, is very mobile, I think sometimes we don't understand what it's like to have those access issues. I remember wheelchaining, wheelcharing my mother around after she had a stroke, and there were places I just didn't go in because we, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't get in the door, or we couldn't find a parking space. And it is, you know, it's hard enough to have a stroke and then not be able to enter places that you used to, you know, restaurants you used to go to and different places, and it was, it was, it was quite discouraging for her to, for us to be able to, to get around at times. So I'm definitely supportive of, of this effort.
I think our, probably our next step is to, for you to approach Picadels and see if they're, you know, interested in probably maybe keeping a lawsuit away from them, if, if Frank wants to take it that far, or, you know, I mean, it's like she said, it's, it's a win-win, it's a win for the city and it's a win for them. If, if he's going to put a handicap accessible door into the, into the business anyhow, you know, I don't see why he'd be opposed to, other than the cost, you know, of having to do it. I, I don't know if we can force him to do it or not. Or if we could come up with maybe, you know, if he's opposed to it because of the cost, maybe we could do a 50-50 split with him or something like that. But I'd definitely like to see it happen.
And your formal approval would come in the way of approving this as part of the Warner Street project bids, which will, you know, maybe be February, we'll bring those to you, and that'll be part of that bid. And by then, we'll know what the disposition is on the orders of Picadels.
Anyone have anything else?
One more quick question, and if we communicated with Frank about this idea, or we're waiting to see what Picadels says?
Um, I would probably wait until we get some sort of response from Picadels. I'm not that Frank won't know about it before I give him a call, but I also understand that he's under the weather right now, so we'll be sensitive to that as well.
Okay. All right. Informational items. Anything anyone wants to bring? All right, that would bring us to public comment. Any public comment? Public wants to make any comments? Appears not. All right. We've got no reason to sit here for a while, so we will adjourn. At six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is standing in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'm also the approval of the agenda.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Any comments, suggestions? Okay. Next, we need to have a motion to excuse Councilman Sickingham. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hopefully he's doing well. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Who would say no? Councilman is excused. Next up is special presentation, annual audit presentation. You're up.
Well, she's going to introduce you.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
All right, this is Doug Friedbell, he's with Friedbell Hafner, and he took care of the audit for the city of White Lake, our fiscal ending June 30th. So I'm going to let him take it from here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. The audit, we, seems like forever ago that we did it, it was a couple of months since we were out here, but the audit did go very good. We had just a handful of what I would call routine entries, nothing out of the ordinary, which is normal. But if you first look at your, the big book with the binder on it, I'll kind of walk you through just a few pages of that and explain a few things or kind of touch on what I think might be of importance. And if there's anything that you see that you'd like further explanation on, be sure and stop me, and I'll be happy to give it a shot. So first on the page, top of page one, that's, this is the audit opinion, the auditor's report. And our opinion is given when we do an audit, we look at internal controls, at compliance, we've tested all the numbers, and look at a lot of analytical kinds of things and make sure everything's in the right place, all to form an opinion on the financial statements. And that opinion is found in the second paragraph of page one, where it says, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. So that's a good, unmodified, clean opinion that you want to have when you have an audit done, so that's good. Moving through the report, pages three through nine is the management discussion and analysis, and this gives a little, kind of a verbal overview or a written format rather than a number format. But at the top of page three is some of the financial highlights that occurred during the year, so you can kind of see the big things, the big bullet points that happened. Did note that the water rates were increased midway through the year there and, and different construction items. And then pages 11 through 13, I'm just going to page you through it a little bit here. Page 11 through 13, this is called the, the full accrual basis method of accounting to come up with everything comprehensively in one spot. So all of the activity of the city is found in these two columns, governmental activities, which is everything but the water and sewer, playhouse, and marina. So the playhouse, marina, water, sewer are business-type activities, so they're in the second column here. But just a couple of things to point out on page 11. First of all, the bottom line, way at the very bottom, you see net position unrestricted. It's the second lineup, and the governmental activities, it's positive, just over a million. Many communities are showing a negative number there, so it's a, it's actually a deficit in many communities, and it's driven primarily by your net pension liability, which you can see is, if you go up about, almost halfway, you see net pension liability of 1.4 million and other post-employment benefits liability of 400,000. So those are, are large numbers, but, but not large enough to drive you into a deficit position, so that's, that's good that you stay in a positive position here. You're one of the few. And then, yeah, pages, pages 12 and 13, this is basically a statement of activities or the income statement. I got slides to show for that. Is there a?
Is there? Should be like a little, and I think it's the page thing on the... Right here, page, and I want to get that arrow down, should go to the next page. I need to be right on, I don't know if you... There you go.
Okay. We'll make it work. So this is, these are, these two slides, and the next two slides here are just kind of a picture way of looking at these pages. But there's, the expenses are divided into various functions or activities of the government of the city. So you can see general government, public safety, public works, recreation. And you can see the expenses are the, the darker blue bar, the revenues are the lighter purple. And what this is really telling you, the, the purple is a direct or program revenue that's associated with those activities. The difference is what your property tax and state shared revenue is covering in each of the areas. So you can see, you know, it looks on here like Public Works is doing a great job, but unfortunately, they are doing a great job, but unfortunately, the, the expenses actually, a lot of what happens there gets capitalized for streets and that kind of thing. So capital items get capitalized, not expense. So it looks like the, the Act 51 money, for example, which is a program revenue, exceeds what the actual operating expenses are because some is used for capital items. And then this one is just a pie chart for governmental activities, showing you where your money is coming from. And you can see the vast majority of it is property taxes at, at the 42 percent, some capital grants, you got some state shared revenues makes up 9 percent of it, and then the operating grants, which includes the Act 51 money, is about 15 percent. And just by way of comparison, I, I pulled up last year's and looked, and everything was about the same, state shared was exactly 9 percent, property taxes was a touch higher at 42 percent. And this year, capital grants is higher because there was some contribution from the, one of the Tiffa districts to cover some of the capital items going on, one of the construction projects. And then, just moving through the, back to the book, pages 14 through 17, this is your fund accounting. So this is more what you're accustomed to seeing when you get monthly reports and that kind of thing. But if you look at just the left-hand column, the general fund on page 14, just a couple of things I want to point out here, right smack halfway down the page, there's unearned revenue, it's called, of 248,000. That's the remaining ARCA money that's out there to be, to be allocated yet. And then near the bottom of the page, you'll see unassigned fund balance of 895,000 in the general fund, and that, that's good, and I have some slides that'll show you a little bit more about that. And then on page 16, which is your, your income statement, just to point out the bottom line for the general fund is a positive 89,000. Major streets actually increased in fund balance by about 159,000 this year. And then the street improvement fund decreased because there was a lot of construction activity going on in that fund this year. And also part of the general fund, if you go way up to page 45, this is the budget-to-actual statement. If you first just jump to page 46, you can see on page 46, the amended fund balance for the general fund, you actually were anticipating or planning or budgeting to lose about 366,000, and you came in at a positive 89,000, so you were ahead of budget by about 450,000. Now, quite a bit of that is due to a couple of delays and some projects and that kind of thing. That'll be carried into '23, '24 year-end. And then this, just by way of a couple of graphs here for, for the general fund. So this shows kind of a five-year trend of your general fund revenues. And again, this is just the general fund, so taxes are up from the previous year, you just see a steady increase there, state shared with levels this year as it was for many communities. And then the other category, that kind of fluctuates up and down, but it's up just a teeny bit this year. They just shut it off. Come on, though. There you go. And then, property tax revenues, this is a little bit longer trend, but again, you can see it just has been a steady increase for the last over many years are there. That's good, that's what you want to see, it's, it's all just based on taxable value of the properties. And this is expenditures by the various functions within the general fund. So the, you can see right away, public safety took a big jump up this year, and some of this is due to just allocating things a little bit differently. But within public safety, there was a significant additional contribution made to MERS, so that's what, what is driving that one up. You see another one out, is the transfers out is up significantly. That was transferred into that capital, or to the street improvement fund for capital outlay for, for significant construction activity. And then the, the other one, that's, that's also just as capital items get purchased, that, that drives that one up, up or down. Okay, this is your, this is one we like to look at with general fund, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. That light blue line there is the city council policy to maintain it right around 35 percent. And you can see it's kind of been up and down and up and down, so right now, it's right at 35 percent. And this is, I'm not exactly sure if it's 35 percent of the upcoming budget or the previous budget or what, what it's 35 percent of, but this is as, as a percent, the actual there is as a percent of your actual expenditures. So you're right, right in line with, with where it should be. Okay. Then the other funds of the city, the business-type activities or the, the enterprise funds, the water, sewer, and playhouse can be found on pages 18 through 20. Only thing I wanted to point out there was on page nineteen, the income statement for each of these funds. So if you look about a third, two-thirds of the way down the page there, the income loss before other items. And you can see the sewer fund did well this year, had a positive operating net income of 424,000. The water was positive, 61,000. The playhouse is a negative 154, so it gets supplemented. And then the, the marina was a positive 4,800, so just making, making money, but not too much. And then there was some additional playhouse money with capital contributions and grants that supplemented that, that amount, as well as a transfer in from, from another fund to help supplement the operating income and loss. So one of the things you have to watch for in these funds is depreciation a little bit. And here's your water and sewer funds. You can see even this year with the, there was, like I mentioned, a rate increase this year, so they kept the sewer fund positive. The yellow is your change in net position. And this is the water fund. Again, that just stayed positive. Last year it was much higher. And that, that's all the slides. The other thing we like to look at here is on page twenty, and that's your cash balance. Cash in all these funds is relatively decent. You got 1.3 million in the sewer fund, 1.1 in the water fund. The playhouse has a positive, you know, 360,000, and the marina is about 175, so, so they're all positive from a cash flow standpoint, and you keep a, want to keep an eye on that too. And then just paging through a couple of footnotes to point out. Page thirty-two, footnote number two, this is where we have to report to the state any non-compliance with the Budget Act. And you can see there was only one very minor overage of $7,200 in the, in the police department. That's very minimal. The, the state has a tolerance of 10 percent of your, of your budget, which would be 130,000. So it gets reported, but the state doesn't do anything with it. And then page forty is your long-term debt footnote, just wanted to point out, there was a couple of new installment agreements or leases issued this year. One was on the Volvo equipment, the other was on the police cruiser. So new debt was incurred and the payments will get, get made over the next three or four years there. And we better talk about the pension on page forty-eight. So the pension, this, this is a report as of June 30th. The pension gets recorded as of December 31st of '22, so it runs a little bit behind. But on page forty-eight, you can kind of see the left-hand column there was the current information on the pension. You can see you went from 89 percent funded in '21 to 20, to 78 percent funded in '22. So it went down, and that's driven primarily this year by that net investment loss of 693,000 there. So MERS had a pretty good track record the last few years before that, which caused that funded percentage to continue to decline, but now it kind of went backwards this past fiscal year. And then, you know, hopefully, now they'll be reporting again as of December of '23 here, and we'll see where their, their numbers ultimately come in, but we, we hope that they're up a little bit again. And that's it as far as the booklet goes. Were there any, any other things that you may have noted that we can try to explain for you?
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, do you have, did you bring extra copies of the graphs? Because they're not all in here.
No, I just have that up here. I think, I did email it to city staff, so they could certainly print that out for you. I can email it to you if you want.
On page eleven, in our net pension liability, you made a comment about we're one of the few. Could you elaborate what, what you mean by that?
Yes, be happy to. So if you look right at the bottom of page eleven in the left-hand column, that's your net position, unrestricted net position number, which is at just over a million dollars. You see that there? So there's many communities, because of that net pension liability, has driven that number into a negative, so they actually have a deficit reported there. Many communities, almost every school district in the state, if you ever listen to the news and hear about the deficit in the pension at the school districts, yeah, almost every one of them has a deficit reported there.
So the fact that we don't have it...
Is good.
Is good.
Very good. I see, like I said, you're one of the few. Yeah, there's only a handful of, of communities that, you know, whether it's things they've done with the pension benefits in the past, you would have had to do years ago, or even closing the plan, whatever it was that was done, I didn't go back and look as to why, but, but it's very good that you are where you are.
And that is a result of...
Fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
On page fourteen, the balance sheet, I was curious about liabilities and fund balance liabilities, why the street improvement number is, is that big? Is that, I, I don't...
The accounts payable...
I can't tell you I know for sure what that means, but...
The accounts payable number there? What, what's the number you're looking at?
Accounts payable, correct.
Yeah, 392,000. Right, right at, at year-end, the invoices that come in for construction that's completed before June 30, and the invoices may come in in July and get paid in July, they're recorded as a payable, an account payable at the end of the fiscal year.
So is that mostly MERS then?
That would, without looking, I would say yes. That is where the big street projects are in that fund.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
And there's a lag time before we get the state money for that, is that correct? The, the reimbursement for the road project?
We're actually, that, that was bid out under the state, so we're actually reimbursing the state?
Well, we're reimbursing.
Yeah. A majority of the cost is on us, but that's just the way it works, and that's the same way it'll work with Warner Street. It's technically a, a state project because of the funding source.
Right.
And then when we get the invoices, Alyssa and Brooke do their magic and reimburse, they'll, they'll tell us how much we owe them.
Thank you. I work with too many of them to remember.
Anything further? Looks good.
Oh, I do have another question. On page sixteen, revenues and expenditures, I was surprised that, that the number under general for licenses and permits is, is 61,000. What, what all goes into that?
I would have to look specifically to see what it is, but my guess is that your cable fees and licenses also go into there, along with your building permits and...
Because the building permits, it doesn't seem like that would...
Right.
Make a big number, so cables...
There's several different line items that go into that.
Okay.
There was also a letter that we issued, the two-page letter that's there. And there, there was, on the second page, there's just a couple, couple points there when that, there was the, the water rate increase this year, and as we were doing our testing, we noted that the, one of the cycles, the rate increase was missed. So we did get that corrected back into the last fiscal year, but it still has to be taken care of on this, by the city. And then it's all, it's all recorded correctly in the financial statements. And then also the, the marina transients, we work with several communities that also have marinas and have transient slips and that kind of thing, but that number looked somewhat low. I know there was some question there with cash transactions and that kind of thing going on. I guess our, our recommendation or suggestion is get away from the cash down at the marina, because it's, it's easy to, to walk away with. And that's, that's all I know?
Anything else by anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda.
If I can.
Yes?
We don't actually have it as a...
Motion to accept.
But we would be looking for a motion to accept the audit and submit it officially to the state of Michigan. Doug might have already done it electronically. But that's typical, is that you accept the audit and have it submitted to the state of Michigan.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second. And seconded. Do we need a roll call on that? All those in favor of accepting the document? Say yes. Yes. Or say no? All right. We're legal. Back to the consent agenda.
Did we have, we had a first and a second?
Oh, we did. I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda is submitted. A second?
Second.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda say yes. You have to say no?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next up is message from the mayor, council, and city manager. City manager?
I don't believe I have anything this evening, your honor.
Well, just one thing. I happened to drive through Lakeside last night, and if you haven't done it, it is beautiful. They've done their, just a little couple blocks, but they did just a fantastic job with their lights. As much as I think we have really improved our lights over time and our decorations, I'm just wondering if we might, when we get to budget hearings and goals and things, gradually increase that budget, or, I don't know, Scott, if that is a Tifa thing, but I just think we have such a small business district, we could, we could even do just a little better, and it's just, it was just really fun to drive through there and see all the, all the lights and the different things that they've done.
You said Lakeside?
Lakeside, yeah.
In Muskegon?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of blocks.
I grew up in Lakeside, so I'm familiar with that.
Lakeside against the rest of the world, right?
There you go, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, but it, it really is, well, I mean, it's fun just to drive around, but that, that kind of struck me. So I'll be bringing it up again.
I would just comment that in trying to get on board with being on the council here, that everybody in the city has been really helpful and cooperative and been very happy with being treated nicely.
That's great to hear. We have, we have a wonderful staff here. We're very fortunate. Jack?
Nothing at all? Okay. Scott?
One thing I, I just want to make a comment on the leaf vacuuming, not the leaf vacuuming per se, but when we say we're going to do leaf vacuuming for four weeks, and the week before it's over, we post that you have to have your leaves out by the 19th to be vacuumed up by the 24th. I don't, I, I just don't go along with that. Vacuuming is supposed to be through the 24th, so if you get them out the 23rd, there isn't any reason why they shouldn't be picked up. Just my observation.
All right. From me, I noticed today that the construction is begun at the Pinheads location. Today, they're starting to clear the, the property in preparation for that new construction of Hartwood Flats. So I've heard over and over from people, is there, are they really going to do it? Well, yes, they are, and they have begun, so it'd be interesting to watch this addition to our community come to fruition. With that, next up is public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Step up, give your name, address, three minutes to say what you want to say. Doesn't look like anyone wants to say anything, so we will move to old business. I don't believe we have any old business, so we will move on to new business, Resolution 23-43, Warner Street. I will happily move the Resolution 2343 for Warner Street MDOT contract. Seconded. They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I don't know what Scott needs to get into explaining a whole lot about it. I'm, I'm assuming this is just a regular standard contract?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, it's similar to what we did on MERS. It'll be an MDOT contract. They'll actually do the bid letting, but we have the approval authorization. And then this also sets up the funding from the state of Michigan, and again, we will reimburse the state as they're the contract holder with whoever receives the bid.
Scott, are we using the, that, on the mix on the road, is that in this part or would it not be in this part?
It will not be in this part. That'll be with the bid documents that, basically, our engineers will develop that MDOT will approve.
And we're still using that finer mix, aren't we or not?
As far as I know, yes.
Stickier as Brian would say. Just for the public's information, this is going to be the replacement of Warner Street from, is it Benston to Slocum?
Pushing my memory. It's actually, yes, from Benston up to Slocum. There's going to be some complete rebuilds because we're going to be doing some underground, and some areas is going to be tear and resurface. So it's going to be, I think there's three actual different types of construction on the stretch.
And at that time, we'll also be replacing the water lines to individual homes under the state mandate?
Yep. Yep, getting rid of any of the suspected lead lines.
How long will that project take, is it?
I don't know if we've actually, typically don't get that until you actually order the bids and they give you a schedule.
Okay.
We kind of give them a broad window, but kind of narrow that down. It will probably take as long as MERS did, so it'll probably be a couple of months worth at least.
Did we pre, preorder some stuff for this project?
I don't believe we did. I think we pre, well...
I thought we pre-ordered...
I think we did.
Water pipe.
Yep, because we pre-ordered for MERS, and then we pre-ordered water pipe for, for Warner as well. Yeah. Which is actually, you know, they have not been delayed at all, you know? I mean, we started pre, pre-ordering the pipes because they were talking 12 to an 18-month delay, and it really hasn't been an issue at all with our construction schedules.
It'd just be nice if, if we could start the construction and get it done sooner instead of later. I mean, the problem we've been running into with the last two or three projects is the after part of it, where everybody's yard's being repaired and whatever, we're so late into the season, there's no growing season left. So they're, they're doing their landscaping and they're doing their hydro mulching and everything else, but nothing gets a chance to grow because we're in October already. I mean, I don't know if there's any way to get anything started any quicker, but it depends on whoever receives the bids, what their timeline is.
Well, we, again, we, we set a, a broad window, so it depends on when we get the actual bids let out and where, you know, companies are bidding other projects. But we will try and hit this as a spring one because we'd like to be done with it by the time school starts because that's a major bus route. And, and you're right, we do like to have two full growing seasons, and typically, our contracts withhold a certain percentage until the spring growing season so that we can verify that, you know, grass is growing. So you've got the fall as well as the spring growing season. So I'll talk to Dan and Brian, and I, I think the plan is to get this into a spring one. Now, the beauty is if it goes past June 30th, we're into another fiscal year, so we've actually got two budgets to, to fund a lot of these projects. But still, you've got July, August, and September to get a project done. I don't think any of our projects have taken three months. So if we can start it in May, as soon as the weight restrictions come off, then we're in real good position. in real good position.
I have a question. Scott, do we use the same materials on all of the roads? I mean, Warner gets really heavy truck traffic.
They're built based on the local streets, it's usually the base. The top coat is normally the same depth and everything. But on the local streets that have less traffic and less weight, we build them to, I guess, a lesser degree. But MERS, Warner Street, Division, they all get built as a major truck route.
Where are we rerouting traffic? I mean, we get a ton of truck in school bus, and then they're going to go on our lesser roads for a good period of time, and that's going to be a problem, both speed-wise and, I mean, it has to be done. I mean, Warner Street is where I just, you know, lost myself and my dog in a pothole a couple years ago. But, you remember that Wallace Tunnel? Yeah, some ladies caught the doggies for me on the other side as I lay in the road. But it has to be done, but, I mean, I'm a little bit concerned about where people are going to go, and are they going to, you know, speed around with this speed on Warner?
Well, in all likelihood, it'll be Division, but again, that'll be something that'll be part of the bids and discussions with the contractor, where the actual detour route is.
Yeah, because that's the, that's the, probably the best one.
All right. There's not further discussion? Roll call, please.
Holmstrom.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Zimer.
Yes.
Cabala.
Yes.
Salford.
Yes. Resolution twenty-three dash forty-three is approved. Warner will be repaired. Early, yeah, earlier. Lastly is a public comment. Anyone want to make any comments? She's up. All right.
Good evening, I'm on the third, I told Lakeview Street. Question, is President Lasko doing anything with the grass they planted, it's all weeds? Down Louis, Lakeview?
I'm not sure what the status is on those punch list items, but I think we are still looking at next spring, because I know Wiltshire, there are some concerns that we have brought up to the contractors and our engineers.
Especially Arctonic, I don't think, or, they don't like it either. They're bigger than me, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I got one quick, I forgot, I should have rolled it in. Any idea on timeline on the lights down by the marina, Scott? Have you heard anything new?
They were still waiting for the poles to come in. When we had bid that out, there didn't appear to be any issues with supply, but they're still not here.
Somebody got promised.
Must be. Got in line.
Yep. So we do have plans to replace those lights in the marina and the park, and they're paid for, and we will have them, just not on the timeframe that we would like them. All right, we're adjourned.